Time to start the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners for Thursday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Today's agenda action will be taken on items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Avoid meeting disruptions. Please raise cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. Board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Excuse me. Board of Commissioners convening as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Barker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. Also, this meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. Roll call. All Commissioners are in chambers today. Invocation today will be given by Mitch Forster of the Mason Valley Southern Baptist Church. Please rise.
Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we call upon you, the almighty God, the ruler of heavens and earth and the creator of us all. We do pray that you will hear our prayer and grant our requests today. We do pray, Lord, for your wisdom, for your guidance, for your counsel, for your infinite understanding and the knowledge of the future. We do pray that everything done today will be in accordance with our constitution, our Bill of Rights, our glorious Declaration of Independence, and that the freedoms that you have granted to us would continue in this county on into the future for our kids and grandkids. We do pray, Lord, that each person speaking will have the peace of their hearts and the confidence and the clarity, and we do pray for peace and for unity in this county, that our lives may be go on forever and the goodness that you have given to us. And we pray these things in the name of Jesus, your son, and ask that your perfect will be done. Amen.
Commissioner Hendricks, please raise the flag.
United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, unanimous for liberty and justice.
A public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Anticipated public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation or asked to state their name for the record will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. We have any public comment today? I see nobody getting up here in chambers. And I don't see any hands on Zoom. So we will move on. Item five for possible action, review and adoption of agenda. Commissioners, anything that you would like to input?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, can we move item seven A up before item six?
Okay. Item seven A will be moved up. Any other input? If not, any public input? Then I will ask for a motion on item five.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda with the aforementioned change.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We will move seven A up to our next item. Seven A for presentation only. Present Tim Schaefer with a retirement plaque and thank him for his twenty-two years of service to the communities of Lyon County. Sheriff Pope.
Good morning. Lyon County Sheriff Brad Pope for the record. Behind me is Deputy. Thank you for moving that up. We want to put Deputy Schaefer enjoys retirement a little bit earlier. Deputy Tim Schaefer to win the Lyon County Sheriff's Office on January third, two thousand and two. Although Deputy Schaefer started with the sheriff's office on that date, he was already a part of the sheriff's office team as he first started as a youth explorer, cadet with the sheriff's office in nineteen ninety-two. While serving in the capacity as a cadet, he became a captain and was a youth supervisor within the Explorer Cadet Program. In nineteen ninety-eight, Tim started as a non-paid reserve deputy, working various assignments in an auxiliary role before he was eventually hired on as a full-time deputy in two thousand and two. Throughout Tim's twenty-two years of full-time service to the citizens of Lyon County, he served in the detention division as both floor deputy and court deputy, as well as the patrol division where he worked as a patrol deputy. During his time in the patrol division, he was selected to be a behavioral health peace officer in two thousand and nineteen, working on the sheriff's office most team. Well, Deputy Schaefer was assigned to the detention division. He was assigned as a floor deputy where he conducted day-to-day operations within the jail. During this assignment, he was instrumental in updating the internal court services program inside the jail, which coordinated inmate court appearances and transportation. Tim provided insight into updating the transportation schedule for inmate court hearings, working with all of the justice and municipal courts within Lyon County to build a better schedule for court hearings. After serving in the detention division, he transferred to the patrol division where he spent the bulk of his time with our team. Tim enjoyed his time at patrol, interacting with citizens and handling all sorts of calls for service. But his biggest passion was when he had the opportunity to serve the citizens of Lyon County as a behavioral health peace officer assigned to the most team. Tim spent four years in this assignment, working alongside a licensed social worker and providing help when it was needed most to those in a crisis situation. Tim was passionate and knowledgeable about his position and truly enjoyed serving in this capacity. His calm demeanor was a welcome sight to people facing mental health struggles, and his dedication to the position helped forge valuable relationships with many citizens in our county, as well as other agencies and departments within Lyon County. Tim was even invited to the two thousand and twenty-three International Crisis Intervention Team Conference and asked to be a presenter of the Lyon County Sheriff's Office most team. Tim, on behalf of the men and women, women serving with the Lyon County Sheriff's Office, we thank you for your dedication and service to our agency and the citizens of this great, very county.
Good for him. It is a fun day. Unless you buy a lottery ticket. Okay, we are ready to move on to item six. Time certain on this. Time certain at nine, nine AM for presentation only update from the Bureau of Land Management, BLM, on current activities.
I guess that way people could read it online if they wanted. All right. Well, I'm John Palmer. I'm the acting field manager for CR Front Field Office for the BLM. So I've got a few updates for you I wanted to go through. So first one I did want to touch on is the Urington Anaconda Mine Site disposal. So I think everybody's familiar with the Atlantic Richfield Company and the Anaconda Site. So at this time, there's not really any new updates, but we are working. We do have a path forward, starting on the appraisal process, and then we're also trying to get that draft environmental assessment started back up. So you know, there could be more news coming up later this year on what's going, what a path forward. So looking forward to hopefully gaining some momentum on that. We have the, what's called the Mason MT survey. So for geothermal exploration, so that's just kind of very limited. They dig like almost like this cross X and then a little down in the earth a little bit to essentially look to see if they want to do more exploration in that area. So that area is down south of Urington. That's in the Wilson Hot Spring and Missouri Flat area. It's actually on Forest Service and probably wondering why we would be talking about a Forest Service project, but we have an agreement with Forest Service where we do the permitting for geothermal for Forest Service as well. So we are working on that right now for just this small surveys. Looking at off highway vehicle SRPs. So going to list off some ones that have been completed recently. So March fifteenth to sixteenth, we did have the Prospector two fifty, which was a Valley Offroad Racing Association race that was, that came through this area. We've also held the Nevada Allstate Trail Riders Nevada Derby Horse Endurance Event on the sixth at a scout camp or Weeks, Nevada. And then on the thirteenth, we had a charity OHB poker run through the Nevada Offroad Association. And then coming up, and this one actually looks like it's not going to end up coming through Urington just because of wildlife issues, but we do have the Frontier five hundred on April twentieth. And like I said, they're still working on the final plans because we did have some wildlife issues on that one. So, but it looks like they might be stopping like a top gun, which is before we get here. So that's kind of where we're at there with those races, and there'll be more coming up. And I would, you know, if there's more that you want to know on SRPs, I'd be happy to answer more questions here. If there's more in-depth you want me to go in future reports or anything like that, we can definitely do more on that. On solar projects, so I think everybody knows there's a few solar projects being proposed. The Parker Butte Solar Variance Package, which is north of Urington, that variance package has been routed into our headquarters. So we're just waiting on that BLM Director concurrence. And then that was just say that we can move forward into the NEPA process. So that's where we're at with that one. The Mason Valley Pine Nut Solar Project, that one has been through variance. They're kind of in they're trying to finalize the site plans. And then they would need to start the scoping process after that for anything. So once all that's kind of figured out, then they'll start the scoping process. And that's when they, we would be reaching out to, you know, all of the cooperators, Lyon County included, on getting some comments on that project. And then Lieber Solar, I think that one, the draft EIS comment period ended on March fourth, and then the anticipated final EIS is late June. That's kind of the timeline that one's on right now. And then Artemisia Solar is, is waiting on the variance package to be put together to be sent to the BLM Director for concurrence. So that one's probably the farthest in, in these four projects, the farthest one behind right now. As far as reality updates, we've been working with the city of Fernley on the lands bill. So we've got that broken up into two phases. Phase one, we're looking to have done early fall. And then on phase two, we've got the archaeology field work authorization granted and the LSSR submitted to cadastral. So we're getting some of that pre-work done for phase two, but our focus is on phase one to get those done. And then when phase one's done, then we'll move into phase two. There is a Great Basin Gas Transmission EIS that FERC has been working on. That's a Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And so they've been working on EIS for our gas pipeline upgrades throughout the state. And so once we've done the NEPA review so far, and then once that's actually finalized by FERC, then we'll issue the authorized the rightaways for beyond lands that are involved. And then Lyon County also has a Highway fifty water pipeline. And then right now, we're kind of in a holding wait pattern, just waiting to know if they want to move forward with the CX or EA. And there was, there's different ways to get that done, but we've been talking with them about getting that done. So there was a specific question about wild horse population last time. And so I do have some of these numbers in here for, these are just the HMA's for Lyon County. So Lyon County, you've got the Pine Nut Mountains HMA. So right now, these are, these are just estimates. We actually just did counts, but they were just last week. So we didn't, we don't have those final numbers in. So these are estimates of what those numbers would be. So Pine Mountain were estimated two hundred and ninety horses, AML is one hundred and seventy-nine. La Haunted was estimated at three fifty-three, AML is ten. The Horse Mountain one, we haven't had any horses in there, AML is one eighteen. And then Wasick estimates are one eighty-five and AML is one sixty-five. And the largest one there, obviously, the, the most discrepancy is La Haunted, and we are currently in the process of writing a gather EA. We don't have any funding for a gather, but we're anticipating that we are going to get that gather sometime down the road. So that's the one that we're focused on right now in Lyon County. And then the last three are kind of projects that are, we've been reporting on, but pretty much they're either complete or going to be complete. And so Vero Fiber Optic, the final EA Fonzie Decision Record was signed on March sixth. The right-of-way grant have been issued and the notice to proceed was issued the first week of April. So construction's going to start right away, and they're going to start to expand the entire state. And so they're starting in five clusters where they'll start with those five spots and just do about ninety mile increments in each of those work areas. Will Busco Geothermal Project, the Fonzie Decision Record was signed earlier this month. And so that one will be moving forward as well, being complete. And then the Eldorado Dam EA Fonzie Decision Record was signed on April eighth. And then the decommissioning of that dam should happen sometime this summer, as long as Monday comes through and all that. That's kind of where we're at. Those ones will fall off for next time. Questions?
Commissioner Keller. Going back to the, the scream of the horses.
Yeah.
Where, when you're saying those ranges, we go to the La Haunted, what does that cover? What, what, what area?
So the La Haunted HMA. So I can tell you what, in my mind, I can see a map of Lyon County, but it's, it's, you know, is it B sixteen? It's over like by Sheriff's area? I don't remember which bombing range that, or?
Yes, I think, yeah.
I think it's that.
B nineteen or B sixteen?
Yeah. So it's, it's kind of to the west of that one, that area.
So it doesn't come up toward like the Silver Springs area?
No, no.
I was just curious about all the wild horses there in the Silver Springs area. Where's that fall?
Yeah. So the Silver Springs area. So ours is going to be, so our HMA is going to be south of the river, because anything north of the river is going to be state.
Okay. So you don't have the Virginia range?
No, we do not have the Virginia range.
They, when they did work on the highway, a bunch of those horses got misplaced on the other side of the highway. And so that's, it came from the BLM. Now it's, I guess it's wherever they land.
It's what?
Yeah, wherever they land, because it came from BLM property. They did the Highway fifty corridor construction, and then they ended up on the other side of the highway. And so then now they live in Silver Springs. So, so it came from BLM.
Yeah.
But now it's our problem.
There's BLM land intermingled in there, but they're, they're all state horses.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate you coming here on a regular basis and keep us up to date. And I really appreciate you putting the horse population in there. And please keep that there. Just one, one comment on that. I think the reason you might not have any money for gathers is because you're spending, what, sixty percent of your horse budget on maintaining horses you've taken off the range? So, yeah, that's, Congress needs to do something about that and separate those two programs. But like I said, thank you very much for, for your coming to and keeping us up to date.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Mr. Palmer, thank you for being here. I appreciate your time and, and this. So on the reality and the updates there, the Fernley on phase one of the lands bill, parcels one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, those are southwest of Fernley, correct?
No, that's the phase two.
Okay.
Yeah.
What exactly, where, where is this one located?
So just these parcels are kind of, some of them are north of town, and then some are kind of like in, in the town.
So is that like the search, what they call the search for flats or north I A D?
There's some in there.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Also on the Mason MT, how much acreage is going to be disturbed out there in Missouri Flat area, do you know?
Well, with this one, like I said, I mean, literally, they just go out and dig across like just this big and a little bit down. So it's very, very minimal.
So yardage, not acreage, yardage?
Yeah, yeah, it's not much.
And also on the solar, I'm sure we'll have some inputs on that as we go by these area projects. But appreciate you updating them on those. First, I've seen of a couple of them. And any other comments? Okay, Commissioner Hendricks?
On the solo, did you say that BLM does plan on making Lyon County a cooperating agency on those?
We'll reach out and ask you to be. And if you choose, yeah, we would make a cooperating agency.
Yeah, we choose to be, right?
That, that would be a yes.
Okay. Anything further, Commissioners? All right. Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Hey, six B, time certain, nine oh five. We are certainly there for possible action. Approved plans for employee health, dental vision, and life insurance coverage effective July first, two thousand and twenty-four, and authorize the Human Resource Director to sign associated contracts.
Good morning, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Dana Haglen. It's Human Resources Director for the record. I'm here to present the renewal for our employee health, dental vision, and life insurance. Every year, we partner with our broker, John Carlson, to get the best renewal rates possible while maintaining robust benefits for our staff. Maintaining desirable benefits has helped Lyon County maintain and attract employees. Every year before we do this presentation to the board, we present the renewal rates to our employee insurance committee. This year, the committee overwhelmingly voted to suggest that the Board of County Commissioners approve our renewal rate, because this year we were very successful in negotiating excellent rates. We're presenting a five percent increase to our health insurance, zero percent to our dental, zero percent to our vision, and zero percent to our life insurance. We recommend the Board of County Commissioners approval, and I'm available for any questions that you may.
Questions? No questions?
Well, actually one.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's the difference from the late backup what we already had?
So we had to adjust. There's not much difference. Just there's one additional presentation and the backup has the adjusted salary or the deductions.
Okay. I was just curious. I've looked at them. They look the same.
And it's also my first year, so sorry for that.
Okay, you're still on your honeymoon. It's okay.
I appreciate that very much.
All right. Any, any other comments?
Zero percent increase is my favorite.
Yes, we thought you might like that very much.
Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion on six B. Don't everybody jump in?
I move that we approve plans for employee health, dental vision, and life insurance coverage effective July first, two thousand and twenty-four, and authorize the Human Resources Director to sign associated contracts.
Okay. I think Commissioner Jacobson.
No.
Keller? Oh, I just heard over here. Okay, I'll go ahead and put Henderson there. If you're going to point, you're going to point at him. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Go forth and sign. Six C, time certain at nine, ten AM for presentation only update from Nevada Energy Representatives on operations in Lyon County. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having us this morning. My name is Chloe Chisholm. I'm the Government Relations Advisor for NB Energy. Here with me today virtually, we have Chris Dancy, who is our Renewable Energy Senior Project Manager. And here with me today is Billy Augustine, and she is our Government and Business Accountant Advisor. So before we start and dive into the both of our presentation, I just want to start off by talking a little bit about our community partnership with Lyon County. NB Energy prioritizes engaging our employees in the communities where we live and work, and our foundation truly does focus on giving back to those communities that we serve. So a big part of that is supporting organizations that align with your community's priorities. And our NB Energy Foundation has had the privilege of supporting organizations in Lyon County, such as the Boys and Girls Clubs, Healthy Communities Coalition of Lyon County, your local Chambers of Commerce and Rotary Clubs. And this has been both financially and through employee volunteerism, and this has ultimately resulted in almost two hundred thousand dollars of community impact. So we are very grateful for your partnership and thank you for that. And with that being said, I'm going to hand the presentation over to Chris.
Chris, we can't hear you.
Still can't. Can't hear you.
Nope. Ladies, it looks like you're going to be presenting.
Why don't we move on to slide six to start, and we can hand it over to Billy to discuss economic development and other matters. And then when Chris fixes his audio, we can go dive back into renewables in Lyon County. So he'll just have Billy. Yeah, right there. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Billy Augustine. Can you hear me? With NB Energy, I am Government and Business Account Manager for all things Northern Nevada. And I will introduce our outage communication process. Our team at NB Energy is committed to open and honest communication with our Our team at N B Energy is committed to open and honest communication with our constituents and our customers, um, in all areas. In the event of something that's either planned in advance for equipment repairs or an emergency outage due to, um, some, something like a traffic accident or a natural disaster or the weather. Customers in both Northern and Southern Nevada, uh, will receive communication when and all possible. We do our best, uh, during outages related to emergencies and those that are also planned. Um, so for example, if we plan to replace a pole, um, I will, the, the correct folks within line, the utilities and the public works um, team still have to know it's gonna be out for this duration during this, um, other state time, so. Um, so that you can find accordingly. Um, again, emergencies, of course, are due to weather events, traffic accidents, natural disasters. Um, and when that occurs, customers who have something, um, set up called my account, which is your online profile from billing to usage um, to notifications will get an email saying, you know, the power's out on so and so street and estimated time, um, storm. So we encourage all customers to set up that account profile. Um, again, it, it allows you to, uh, receive alerts by email, text or by voice phone. Um, so, right now, we've got some team, um, some folks at N B Energy that are working on a communication plan um, to better handle alerting the community of outages in the future. Um, so while they're devising this plan to sort of get together like a call bank of, um, representatives to call customers and do direct outreach, um, in the event of emergency, that's, um, we're gonna put together something a little bit better than just getting an alert by, uh, email. So while we're working on that, uh, the launch date should be this summer. And next slide. Okay, so, great. Don't usually get an applause, but we have good news today. Um, effective April first, uh, customers uh, did start to see a decrease on their energy bill. This was a result of our filing with the Public Utility Commission of Nevada um, mandating the base tariff energy rate and the deferred energy accounting adjustment filings that we make quarterly to align our rates with the historical twelve months of cost of fuel that is necessary to generate the electricity that requires to power our facilities. This includes natural gas and power that we purchase through other providers. Increases or decreases for providing power to our customers are passed on dollar for dollar. Uh, there is no cost in the energy and the cost of what we approve from your billing. Um, and again, this positive news is due to changes in fuel and purchased power costs we incur to serve our customers. So rates for both electricity and gas, um, being the result is the reduction. I think the next slide has a graph of natural gas, yeah. Um, so looking forward through this year and into twenty twenty five, costs are expected to continue to decline. You can see the spike there in the fall of twenty twenty two into spring of, uh, twenty twenty three, there was a spike in natural gas costs and we all, we all felt, you know, the pain without. Um, natural gas remains critical in providing reliable electricity for both Northern, um, Nevada and us. Next slide, franchise fees, um. Just to describe what this is, a franchise fee is what a utility company pays the city for use of the right of way. So in Fernley specifically, uh, the fees are collected on a customer bill as the vehicle and the fees are then turned over to the city as a revenue stream. The city of Fernley approved its ordinance two zero two three dash two zero zero six in the fall of twenty twenty three. The franchise fee was an existing four percent and it was raised to five percent. This became effective February first and customers were, um, advised on their November, December bills. I think local government tax would increase with the effective date of February first. Nevada, um, reside revised statute allows Fernley to increase the fee up to five percent, but not more than one percent in twenty five. Unless the statute has changed that rule still held. Uh, next slide, okay, economic development. Activity in Lyon County, uh, continues to encompass manufacturing and data centers, so good news there. Types of growth in our region here include transmission and distribution of power. Uh, transmission being the largest structures that you see when you're driving down the highway or open fields, um, interstate highways, open areas mostly. And then distribution would be the poles that you see in residential areas, um, by businesses and homes. These carry electricity to the homes and businesses. Our team in Northern Nevada, um, the Economic Development Team, including myself, work closely with businesses, uh, land sites, look directors, real estate developers, um, and other professionals to, um, provide information on regional economic development growth opportunities in your communities. So we are a partner with you in, um, promoting growth. Things that we can help with on our team, um, we've got a calculator where customers can plug in what they think their, um, expected usage is and then the current rates, any, um, applicable local government taxes depending on the county. And it'll give them an estimate on what their power costs, um, will be for said project and for said completion date. Um, another thing we also provide are, um, benefits on transportation and labor. Um, so the sites, the Nevada site locator is on our economic development site and, um, folks can just click on that to get just the breadth of resources on helping to identify, um, why they shouldn't invest in your community. I mentioned the electric and gas estimators, those are also out there for, uh, community stakeholders to ensure, um, we've got the right resources in place to support their growth needs. And the next slide.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Uh, we have a question from.
So, uh, I don't know if it was miscommunication or what in the past, uh, some of the complaints I get are probably, it should be under that planned outages, I think it was with poles and stuff. How do you notify, you notify the, the customers that are on that line? Do you notify the county that, uh, when that's gonna happen and if that's the case, I wanna be notified of anything in the county, cause that's the first complaint I get. And I'd like to know if it's, it's on the planned thing, then I can just tell them, hey, this was planned, you need to sign up and I don't have to chase it down.
Yeah, for sure. Um, so I've been with N B Energy since October, so I'm a little bit new. However, since day one, the expectation in my role is that if I get, um, notification of a planned outage, I have a distribution list of folks per county, per city, per community that I would send the, uh, planned outage notification to. And I apologize that, but sometimes the commission might not be on there. It'll, uh, often be utilities, public works. I'm, I'm not sure if Andrew's on my distribution list for outages, um, planned or otherwise, but I will absolutely make sure everyone here would like to be.
I would, I would definitely.
No, and I appreciate that. That's really great feedback, just for all the communities that I serve.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. So yes, since we're talking about outages, I wanna talk about unplanned outages. Because it's been an extra nor, extraordinary amount of them lately. Do you know why?
Weather?
Uh, they're not all weathers. They aren't all weather. I guarantee you that. There were some in beautiful days and, you know, I mean, we got people complain every day the power's going out, power's going out, power's going out. So it's not all weather, but what y'all doing to prevent that?
Well, we're hardening our network, you know, constantly investing to, um, strengthen it so that things like that, um, don't become, you know, an issue. Whether it's undergrounding utilities or, um, just strengthening the equipment that we have. I do get alerts on all of the outages and whether it's replacing a pole or a fuse or it was the wind, um, or hot air balloon, like whatever it was, um, I get alerts on those. There is always an indication.
So none of us equipment related, it's all somebody else's fault.
Oh, no, not at all, sir. Um, no, it, it is often on our side, whether it's a fuse or a breaker or something needs to be repaired, for sure. It goes both ways.
Like I said, it seems to be happening a lot lately, so I hope you guys dedicate some effort to.
Yeah, I will. Take note and I will absolutely address that.
Thank you.
I, I think that might be part of my same thing as what I, what I'm calling a planned one. Unplanned, it's just outage is completely, I'm wanting information. Thank you.
As to why, absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I think we're good on that. We'll move on, I guess, see if Chris has any verbal through his site. Any audio? No. Still dead on the audio. It's like he's throwing his headset away and moving to a handset. And I think Nevada Energy is not giving him any energy there.
Okay.
Looked like he was calling in.
I think that was an unplanned outage.
Yeah, that wasn't. Absolutely.
Chris, anything on your end?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, we can hear you now.
Woo, finally. Good morning, Commissioner. Sorry about that. My name's Chris Dancy, uh, I work for N B Energy and I sit within the Renewables Department. Of course, all of us are familiar with N B Energy, uh, we are the primary regulated utility serving the state of Nevada. We cover about forty six thousand square miles and a night, and about ninety percent of the state's population. We serve one point five million customers and are proud to also to be, uh, be able to provide power to the fifty million plus tourists that visit our state annually. We have around twenty five hundred employees, uh, and our average tenure is relatively long. Uh, and also additionally, half of our workforce is represented by I B W. We could move to the next slide, please. N B Energy has always had renewable energy ambitions. Our ambitions for renewable energy predate even the renewable portfolio standard in the state of Nevada. Uh, we executed our first power purchase agreement for a Gmail thermal asset in nineteen eighty seven. Uh, again, well ahead of the state mandated renewable portfolio standard. Today we sit, or in twenty twenty two, we sit, sat at around thirty seven percent, uh, uh, of our energy coming from renewable sources. We're mandated to increase the amount of renewable sources in our portfolio to fifty percent by twenty thirty. So there's still a bit more to add to, uh, to achieve the fifty percent standard by twenty thirty and there's an addition, and in addition to the fifty percent standard by twenty thirty, uh, we're targeting and have a goal of a hundred percent clean power by twenty fifty. Our current portfolio consists of about fifty nine large scale geothermal, solar, solar and storage, hydro, wind and biomass renewable generation assets. Uh, within the renewables team, uh, I specifically focus on development. Uh, N B Energy is relatively new to the renewables development, uh, space. Um, however, we are looking to, or expand our development efforts. The part of the reason of why we're here today is we wanted to help provide a bit of a roadmap as to how we look at the development process flow, the timing it takes to get from, uh, you know, an idea of a project to ultimately bring, being able to bring it into service and help provide you with tools to vet projects. Um, it's, it's relatively common in the development space for developers to throw spaghetti on the wall, hope it sticks. And generally, communities are limited on resources. So if we can help provide you with tools to quickly vet projects and determine if they're basically real or not, um, that could be helpful in enabling you to understand, you know, if you should add resources or focus on a particular project that is working through, uh, their, its approval process. As you can see on the top, it typically takes five plus years from beginning to end to develop a project. For us, um, and how you, how you develop a project varies from developer to developer and, you know, the culture that the company has, um, but we are striving to pursue sustainable development practices. We're N B Energy. We'd like to remain with, within the state and continue serving the state forever. Um, and making sure that we intelligently cite projects, um, that are, that works not only from a cost perspective, but from a community perspective is very important for us. And so you could see in step one, as we, after we identify a potential site location, first, we look at the interconnection distance from the proposed project to, uh, where we could connect it into transmission. And, and there's two reasons why we, we do, the way, that's one of the first things we look at. One, cost, if it's an excessive, excessively long genti that drives up costs for the project, which of course isn't helpful for our rates. Um, but two, the longer the genti is, the more land you're gonna be disturbing to interconnect the project. And so that's one of the first things that we look at, um, rough cost, just to give an order of magnitude. Um, it's about two to three million dollars or potentially even more to build a genti line per mile. And with those costs, it generally doesn't make economic sense to build a project that is greater than ten miles away from the interconnection location. Now, after we've determined that it makes sense from an interconnection perspective, have come up with some very preliminary project specifications, one of the first, um, or one of the next items that is very important to us is, um, connecting with the community. We wanna sit in front of you and all the local stakeholders very early in the process to have a, to gain a high level understanding on the feedback of a project and any potential concerns that may exist. Any serious developer is probably gonna do that as well. And so our recommendation would be to look out for that communication early on because again, that shows their general interest in moving forward with the project and, um, making sure that they incorporate the feedback from local stakeholders. And please stop me at any time if you have any questions, um, but I'll continue working through, you know, the high level development. Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner, Commissioner.
I was gonna wait till you're done. I've heard your, uh, your, uh, thing before, but, uh, each one of these, as you go through there, uh, I'm looking at the, the ten miles cost prohibitive, is that, uh, a certain size of project or is it just ten miles? I mean, uh, we're looking at four coming in, into Lyon County that was just presented and I was just looking at what sizes they are.
Yeah, uh, you're right. So as the sub-projects get larger, fixed costs like gentis get spread across more megawatts. So as the project size increases, that genti length can increase in order to enable an economic project. Libra, for example, has a genti that's greater than the ten miles. But it's a large project and that's what enables it to be cost effective. Um, but generally, you, you know, you don't see projects, um, that large, uh, and so generally a good rule of thumb that we work with is, you know, trying to limit gentis to ten miles or less. Uh, but that, again, that's a rule of thumb and can change depending on the size of a project.
Thank you. It did, the closer ten miles caused, caused me problems because that's closer to the community to where we see it. And so the, so you're kinda putting it into the community by that ten mile stretch and that, that's a problem too. That's all I have so far.
Okay, no problem.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman Hawkeye. Um, thank you, sir, um. Uh, Mr. Nancy, um, we're gonna, in order to meet, uh, some of your renewable energy goals or government expectations, whatever they are. By the end of that, when you try and reach those end goals, how many acres are you anticipating needing for solar fields, geothermal, wind farms, whatever the renewable energy is, what, what, what are we actually looking at in this state?
Hmm, yeah, I sit within the renewables department and so I don't do the resource planning. Um, it really is highly dependent on the availability of resources. For example, uh, if we're able to diversify our resources by including projects like wind or additional geothermal that drastically reduces the amount of solar that's needed. It really just depends on the resource mix going forward and that would dictate how many acres are ultimately impacted. Um, you know, rules of thumb that we think about that again, change based off of resource planning feedback and load growth and there's a lot of factors that, um, that are part of the equation. Um, but generally, we think we need somewhere in the range of four hundred to six hundred megawatts of new renewable resources per year in order to meet these targets. Now those, the, that four hundred to six hundred megawatts can be served through, you know, a variety of resources. And our goal is to try to continue diversification, um, away from just solar. Um, because as you add solar capacity, the ability for that solar capacity has diminishing returns. Um, so by that, I mean, if you add one megawatt of solar, it doesn't reduce the amount of power that you. the amount of power that you need to inject into the system by an equivalent one megawatt for each megawatt that you add. It's called the effective load carrying capacity. And so you can't just fully build out the system with solar in order to have an economic system. We'll need some diversity. And that really complicates the question in terms of how many acres would be ultimately impacted. I'm sorry, can't give you a very good answer on that.
No, that's fine. All you can do is be as give as much as you can and be as honest and that's all you can do. So I'm not that was that was a fine answer. And then I guess my other thing is this envy energy fight to get all this warehousing and all the roof space in the state of Nevada. Utilizing that before taking public lands or is it is public land grab just easier than trying to get on top of all these rooftops?
It's not. It's not really a question of ease. It's a question of cost. You know, and Bill, I just shared a slide, you know, we anticipate our costs going down. Which is helpful considering, you know, the last year or two, when natural gas prices were extremely high. The economics for small scale solar compared to these larger projects. I mean, it's it's double the cost. It's significantly more expensive. So with everything, there's there are pros and cons. We do have programs that look that are look at community solar projects. It is. It isn't a program that sits within my specific team, so I can't speak very intelligently on it. But again, the reason why we are pursuing these larger scale utility projects is to minimize costs as much as possible. So our bills are as low as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to piggyback on Commissioner Jacobson's comments because yeah, we are taking up a lot of public lands for both these large scale projects. And the transmission lines, it seems to me it would be more cost effective to put rooftop solar on people's houses and then you won't need the transmission lines. Is there an incentive for that or is NV Energy not have a program supporting residential rooftop solar?
So we, we, again, I can't speak to exactly the small scale solo programs that we have. I sit within the utility scale department. But generally, the reason this department exists is because it is much more expensive to have you know, rooftop solar to serve the the load of the system compared to large scale facilities.
Commissioner Hendricks, did you have something?
Yeah, I wanted to know if there's a list of requirements, things that you require from these developers and where that list is so we could take a look at that.
We I wouldn't say we have necessarily a list of requirements. But as projects are bid into us through our request for proposals, we have a scoring system to where we look at, you know, things like genti. How long the genti is and as the genti lengths increase, we assign a score to that. And the score of the project, you know, will will it'll get a lower score if the genti is too long, for example. And ultimately, we kind of grade it like a test and the higher your score is for all the different metrics that we look at. The higher likelihood of the project being shortlisted and ultimately, you know, recommended to the PUCN for regulatory approval. We look at a variety of issues, genti, where they are in the environmental process, permitting. Of course, cost is a is a heavily weighted item throughout the scoring. So we have an internal list of what we require for due diligence. I'd have to I'd have to connect to see if we can share that externally. But I imagine, you know, from a high level, we can provide you an overview of what we look at. I'll have to get back to you.
Commissioner Keller.
I had a question on your renewable portfolio as far as how much your solar is comprised into your your business plan. You know, if it gets cloudy or whatever, you're not going to use it and there's only a percentage of at least that's what you explained before to me. But I'd like to know what that percentage is of solar and you guys are starting to put in your own solar fields. Are you gonna, how much solar are we looking at for the state of Nevada? If that's if your portfolio can't handle it all because you're going to have a same thing you had the solar, the geothermal, hydro, wind, biomass. That all makes it up. So how much do we really need on this solar moving forward?
We're about to file an integrated resource plan with the PUCN in June. In that integrated resource plan, we'll make publicly available all of our resource projections at that time. I don't have those numbers readily available right now. I apologize.
Well, thank you. To me, that's one of the important things to know of basically what you're gonna need as everybody's out there trying to get this land tied up. And maybe it's not being, maybe it shouldn't be being tied up. So that was my my process.
Yeah, I think I think a lot of us are going through the acreage for megawatts. I mean, I know that part of the plan from BLM was fifty-five hundred acres and we get seven hundred megawatts of sunshine power. So I think there's a big concern about the amount of public land that's being taken up for solar panels. And of course, mitigation for that after fifteen or twenty years, the I mean, there's a lot of questions here that need to be looked at before we start covering hundreds of thousands of acres with solar panels and windmills. But that press on, please. We'll move on.
Completely agree. And and that's why we're here is we want to have the conversation ultimately. You know, the renewable portfolio standard has been set and that's a law that we need to continue to try to meet. And the reason why the renewable portfolio standard was set was to combat, you know, global warming and reduce emissions and improve air quality. So just like anything, there's pros and cons and we need to work together to try to balance the development of projects while also trying to meet the broader goals of limiting our air emissions.
Okay, go ahead.
Moving through the development process, of course, you know, after after we move through the site and project identification stage, we look to gain control of the land through an acquisition, leasing it. At this next phase is when money starts really getting spent on surveys and data collection to analyze the cultural and natural resource impacts. The grid interconnection process is pursued with with the the local transmission provider, likely us in the state of Nevada and the NEPA process and preliminary engineering. The next stage is again, a key milestone or marker that highlights the viability of a project. It's very unlikely that a developer is going to be able to secure financing for a project unless they have an off-take agreement in place. In the state of the Nevada, the majority of the off-take agreements would be with us. There are some that are working directly with, you know, corporates. But a lot of it will fall through us. So a question that I would ask these developers is where are they at in their off-take process or in your off-take process? Have you found a customer yet? Again, that highlights how progressed the project is. And if they do have a customer contracted, ready to go, then it significantly increases the likelihood that they'll be able to find the money to go build the project. If they don't have an off-take, it's probably very early stage and, you know, wouldn't necessarily warrant too much of you know, focus at that time. Once the construction contracts are negotiated, the off-take contracts are negotiated. Financing is in place. That's when construction can or in the necessary permits are in place like the UIPA. That's when construction can start. Key equipment can be ordered typically takes depending on the size of a project, one to two years to build a solar and battery facility. After that is when when the project can be placed into service. Before I move to the next slide, are there any additional questions on key development milestones for renewable energy or solar project?
Questions? No. No, go ahead.
Thank you. Here's a map of the renewable energy projects that we are aware of in Lyon County. I did notice when the BLM representative was speaking that there's actually a couple of projects that we're not aware of that were on his list that aren't on ours. But generally, there are a fair amount. We see a combination of geothermal, wind and solar projects, both operating and in the development stage. The largest project currently contemplated is Libra. My understanding is the majority of that project is not located within Lyon County. But a portion is, and of course, the genti connecting up to Fort Churchill runs through Lyon County. In addition to Libra, two other projects that that are on our radar that are of interest are Winston Solar and Mason Valley Solar. These two projects are also right next to Fort Churchill. In the mountains to the west of Fort Churchill, we're hearing of potential wind projects. I don't know if they're named or if they've even started a variance process, but we've heard of some folks poking around. In addition to the wind, Artemisia, Coneflower, Apex, and then the Wabusa geothermal project are are currently located in your in in your county. Again, this is a map of what we are aware of.
One moment, Commissioner Henderson had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chippy. Do you know who's the developer behind the wind project in Mark Twain?
I
I've never heard of that before.
No, I was trying to figure that out ahead of this meeting. I've heard about it, but I wasn't able to nail down what company it is.
Okay, thank you. We'll do a little research.
Commissioner Jacobson has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Dancy. So you're saying solar needs to be within ten miles of a power transmission type center, but and I may have said that wrong. What about wind and geothermal? Do they need to be within that same ten mile area or?
Again, it's a rule of thumb. Two to three million per mile for genti. I mean, I've seen costs up to eight million per mile for high voltage. It's very expensive. So wind, because of the higher capacity factors, could potentially afford a larger genti while while having a attractive cost of energy. So I imagine you can probably have a little bit longer genti and have it remain cost effective. I focus on solar and batteries within our development team. So again, you're kind of getting a bit into an area where my expertise is probably not top-notch. Generally, I would say though, that these the ten mile rule of thumb is applicable.
Thank you.
And no further questions. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for the time today.
Thank you.
Thank you for bearing with us while we hop around in this presentation. If you could jump back to the Green Lake slide. And before I dive into Green Lake, I just want to say back to Chris's topic around renewables. We know that there has been a large influx of these projects coming into Nevada and we just our goal in talking through our development process flow and just being a part of the conversation with you all is to be a resource and a tool and let you know that we're here to work through this with you and it's not a one-size-fits-all basis. Your county is individual and specific and not everything works the same throughout our entire state. So we just want to be a part of that conversation and you be a resource to ask questions, talk through concerns and just want to say that before I move on to Green Lake. Okay. And I know you're all very familiar with our Green Lake project, so I won't belabor this topic too much. But as you know, it is our major transmission project that resulted from state legislation. Green Lake West is our five hundred twenty-five kilovolt line that runs from Yarrentown down to Las Vegas. Green Lake North running through sort of the upper middle of our state, another five hundred twenty-five kilovolt line from Yarrentown to Elite. And our Common Ties is our smaller three hundred forty-five kilovolt lines that run from Yarrentown up into the Reno area. Move on to the next slide. Really want to focus on our in-service expected dates and our schedule timeline. So for Green Lake West and Common Ties, we are on track for our environmental impact statements this summer. Still expecting in-service dates of twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight for Common Ties and phases one and two of Green Lake West. And for Green Lake North, we are also on track with those environmental impact statements and also still expecting a twenty twenty-eight in-service in-service date. What I really want to focus on is the Lyon County specific permitting update. So we can move to the next slide. So yes, for our Walker River Fort Churchill substation, we did receive approval from this body last year in December for our conditional use permit application. We also just received approval on our UIPA permits from the PUCN on April, Mike. And we're also we're expecting to receive the list of permit applications that we need from the PUCN by the end of this week. And so moving on from those permits, we also on the sixteenth, so earlier this week, we submitted our, oh, sorry, that's that one. We submitted our road maintenance and traffic management agreement to Lyon County for review and approval as part of our conditional, I'm sorry, as part of our permit compliance. So that was submitted earlier this week. We plan to submit our second UIPA permit application for the three forty-five kilovolt lines in Lyon County this summer. And we will be holding a pre-application meeting with Lyon County for that second conditional use permit application this summer as well. And I just want to note that we'll be following the same process that we use for those original pre-application meetings that we have with Lyon County. Worked very closely with your staff. It was wonderful to work with. Those meetings went very well. Several meetings with Lyon County planning, so we plan on following that same process. So that's our specific Lyon County permitting update for Green Lake. That also concludes our presentation.
I just had a question on that Green Lake project. It's what I understand the capacity is already full. It's already there's already people that are already going on that line.
That I'm not aware of. We're still in our permitting phase. I don't know if we have transmission capacity reserved for specific projects, but I can find out.
Okay, so it was my understanding it's already full. So how come we aren't thinking about expanding that already during the construction phase?
That I don't know, but I will check. Thank you for the question.
Anything further? Commissioner Jacobson.
Thanks, Chairman Hock. Just curiosity, what was the estimated cost per mile of that Green Lake?
That's another thing that I don't know, but I will consult with our land use and our we work with power engineers. I know you've heard from a lot on on Green Lake, so I will. I will get that cost for you. And you said cost per mile.
Well, we've heard cost of adding these solar fields in the power transmission stations and that's why we're seeing them where everyone is, they're visible to everybody, but yet it seemed like this product project has an unlimited resources. So thank you.
Welcome. And our our goal for for Green Lake is to make it possible and economical for new renewable projects to tie into our transmission so that there's, you know, the actual ability for them to do that. I don't know about unlimited capacity, but I I can find out those those dollar amounts for you and get back to you.
Anything further? Okay. Thank you very much.
We appreciate your time. Again, those that is our contact information. Anytime you need anything, my specific job is to work directly with all of you as the government relations advisor. I know we've had the privilege to meet at NACO meetings, so it's good to see you. And anytime.
And next time we talk to Linda, tell her hi.
Sorry. Sorry.
Next time we talk to Linda.
She sends her regards.
Commissioner Jacobson, another question?
Just it looks like maybe some members of the audience might have questions. Is that just something they'll address for the Mountain Hallway? Or can we have public participation on this? And I don't know.
Presentation.
Yeah, yeah. I have a question if I may.
Oh, okay.
I I'm sorry, I don't usually ask questions on presentations, but I do have one on this. So you talked a little bit about Green Lake North. Why does NV Energy feel that it's necessary for a three mile wide utility corridor for the Green Lake North project as proposed by the BLM?
I believe the reason that we pursue utility corridors is to make permitting more accessible for the different jurisdictions that we'll be working in. Rather than also disturbing land, we we try to be creative and look for land that might already be in use for certain utilities. So also to avoid going through maybe specific archaeological or you know, landscape areas that we we want to avoid disturbing. I I think the purpose of making of pursuing a utility corridor is to just make that permitting a little easier and to avoid disturbing land as much as we possibly can. But I I don't know why three three mile wide specifically, but I think that's
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I know we got to go. I have a quick question. So if you get a three mile utility corridor before you put the project in, then you put your project in, do you relinquish the land you don't use back?
I don't know. I'll find out.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a lot of follow up to do. I'm not the expert on Green Lake, but I am the expert at talking to you guys and finding out. So I I wrote all of these questions down and I'll I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Hendricks, anything? Commissioner Keller?
I just wanted to take a chance to thank you guys for coming. And the more that you guys come and the more we hear raises more questions to us, but allows us to understand what's going on a little bit more. So I really appreciated the more the better.
That's our goal. So more questions, the better, and the more communication, the better. So we appreciate your time and all the questions. And I think I'm going to be reaching back out to almost all of you. So I'll talk to you soon and thank you for your time.
Thank you, ladies and Mr. Dancy as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate it. I think we need to take a break for a closed session. No? So 10:30?
I think we've got it's 10:12 now, so it's up to the chair. If we if you want, we can get through item eight.
Okay, we can get through next. Yeah, Commissioner and County Manager on A. So let's go ahead with Commissioner Reports and Commissioner Hendricks, please start.
I attended the annual open meeting law training and the Lyon County Sheriff's Office Search and Rescue Rescue Bingo Night here in Yarrington. Last night, I attended the Carson Water Subconservancy District Board meeting. And that board, their their staff has really reached out and helped assist the Dayton Valley Conservation District and really helping them get up and running the way it should be again. And then last night on the way home, there was another horrific accident on Highway 50. And I'm just frustrated that the traffic the safety measures that we're trying to implement aren't happening fast enough.
Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I attended the NACO Legislative Committee on April the 5th. They've been taking notes from the legislature because they're getting started very, very slow. One thing that we did talk about, they are working with an interim committee to maybe get the elected officials pay bill that Nye County brought in the last session passed during the interim and to be a committee, we are, which should be a lot easier than it coming from a local government. Now, I've also attended the Campo meeting on April 10th. And I'm happy to say that Mound House is getting mentioned more and more at these Campo meetings. They are right now undergoing, in fact, the draft is out of a local road safety plan. Somebody wants to look at that, they can go to the Campo website. You can also submit comments. The comments at CarsonAreaMPO.com. They're having a special meeting on April 29th in the the Bob Crowell Room at the Carson City Community Center. And you know, like Commissioner Hendricks said, there was another bad accident on Fort Churchill and that is actually still in Campo property. So I are the Campo area. So I hope people that that live out there will get on that website and make their comments known. But I also attended the Silver City Advisory Board. They were asking about some trees and playground equipment that supposedly got approved a couple of years ago and they don't have them in yet. So we'll we'll follow up on that. I want to thank Dustin Holman and the Roads the Roads Director for attending and and talking to them about some of the problems that they've had due to all the runoff this winter. And then one last thing on 7/20, there'll be a Palooza and in Silver City. That's it.
Commissioner Keller?
I also attended the NACO Association of Counties Legislative Committee. One other thing to include with what Commissioner Henderson talked about, we also went through the legislative deadline so we can be prepared moving forward. I attended the Carson River Water Subconservancy. I also attended the Open Meeting Law class. And I was well attended, so I I really like to see that. I attended a Brookings webinar about rural rural problems we have because of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the Chips and Science Act and Inflation Reduction Act, and what if any opportunities there are for the rurals to to gain on those. Also attended the Lyon County Regional Transportation Commission and we approved the bid for the 2024 Lyon County RTC Road Rehab Project. The project will be in Silver City and Shad Lane in Dayton. The project will consist of point seven two miles of roadways in Silver City of road construction and and patching in multiple areas and Cape Sail on Shad Lane in Dayton. And that's it.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Chairman Hockaday attempted to attend the Planning Commission meeting. I just there was a snafu, but I do want to thank all of our planning commission people for the time they put in. Also tended the Lyon County tentative budget meetings. Hats off to Mr. Foley and his staff for their work prep and insight as we move forward with county business. Also want to invite everybody to the April 27th Boys and Girls Club event in Fernley from three to six. If not busy and looking for something fun to do, hit me up and I'll fill you in. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Also attended the budget meeting. Which we had a pretty discussion on the budget. Planning Commission, of course, was had to be postponed. Had our agenda review for today's agenda. Lyon County Copper and or I should say Lyon Copper and Gold Meeting attended that and discussed some of the issues that county might be facing with that situation going on in the Anaconda area. And had the local emergency planning commission meeting where we went over some new documents and welcomed some new members of the to the committee, which is great to have as many people on that committee as possible.
Chairman Hockaday?
Yes.
I did forget one thing. I had a great tour of the new courthouse. As we get closer to completion, I just want to thank Mr. Haskin for for giving me that tour. It was it was excellent.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Haskin. That was a good tour. And you go ahead with your report.
All right, I will keep my comments brief, Andrew Haskin, for the record this morning. So I attended the Yarrington Pike Tribes Council meeting last week to discuss the lands bill and gave them a presentation on that. They will, I believe the next step for them will be working on a resolution supporting that lands bill, but will get submitted to Congress with the rest of the resolution that that the board put and approved last last meeting. I've had a meeting with Campo earlier this week regarding a number of issues. Some of them were discussed here. You know, regarding Highway 50 and transportation in the Dade House area. So look forward to continuing to work with them as we look for solutions to different challenges in that area. Then I also attended the open meeting law training. I really want to thank District Attorney Rye and Aaron Lopez for doing the majority of the work on that training. It was well attended and turned out pretty good. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, thank you. I'll let the number nine elected official reports. Any reports, Sheriff?
Well, again, Lyon County Sheriff Brad Pope for the record also went to the Sheriff's Office Search and Rescue Bingo. It's good to see with Hendricks there. I cleaned up, so it was amazing. One thing that we're getting pushed a lot and I spoke with the county manager and ask you guys, I know there's a workshop on code enforcement. That's still in the process. Things are being ironed out, but I'd really like to ask the county commissioners to consider passing some sort of legislation that gives the sheriff's office powers to cite for accumulation of refuse, things of that sort. We get beat up on it constantly. And telling the constituents that there's nothing that we can do from the sheriff's office standpoint is starting to mount up, so. That's all that's sad. I don't know if this is the appropriate time during elected officials report. Maybe it's something we need to agendize, but there's there's several different ways we could go about it, but really like to put that on your radar. Ask that the sooner that happens.
Commissioner Jacobson?
In regards to what Sheriff Pope just said, thank you for that. I I'm all for I think that would be great support for our code enforcement as well. I think, though, rather than having us present something to you, I I would recommend that you present something that works in other counties or other areas and would work for your your staff and present that to us and we can either tweak it and or prove it because I know that we all hear code enforcement stuff, whether it's emails or or phone messages. And so I know that I can't speak for my four fellow commissioners, but I can speak for me and I will support that 100%.
Commissioner Keller?
I wouldn't mind having an agenda item on it, but more of a workshop because I'd like to see some of the history brought back because we used to have it. I know the buyer wanted to have it and we decided not to give them stuff, not a basically a badge. They couldn't cite. And then we also ran this through the DA's office because this puts more onerous on the DA's work. And so we did have a code enforcer work actually out of the DA's office. And I think that was also a cost thing because a sheriff's office has different salaries than DA's. And so there's a salary thing that we have to look at and also why we have it just as a code enforcer where we have the system now. So it's a bigger project, bigger. I I'd rather see a workshop and kind of hash out everything what's best for the county as long as we go to the same solution.
And I would say to that, instead of one person being able to write a citation for accumulation of rest refuse, I've got about 40 sworn that can do that. Be directed to do that in investigation into that and a citation takes about 10 minutes, so.
Well, it also brings into planning zoning and where with the training of teaching sheriff's office how to be know all the zoning. And so that to me, it's a different department. So let's just see what works best.
I I definitely agree with the workshop on that. It's important enough for us to get that done. Anything further?
I'd I'd be all for a workshop as well. It's one of my biggest complaints I get.
Anything?
I have nothing there.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sign me up for a workshop.
Okay, let's go with the planted official reports and then we probably need to take our closed session here. Any appointed officials? No, seeing none. Well, yeah, here we go.
I'll just address that code enforcement issue real quick to we are still working on work on a an ordinance that I think will address some of those concerns. And so we'll you know, maybe when we get drafted that we'll schedule a workshop, we can kind of go through that and then that'll have some of the the recommendations in there. That's one of them. So that'll give us a little little something more to discuss. And we'll definitely work with the sheriff's office on making sure that they're
One one quick question there for the county manager. Mr. Foley's is he's going to be ready for a meeting then? We go ahead and break for a closed session?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything further from the commissioners? All right, we have to break for a closed session. We will return after that. Yes.
I guess. I don't know how long would it take. It doesn't usually take that long, but maybe advisory reports in case someone online needs to jump off. Oh, you already you already did them?
I haven't seen any.
Advisory boards?
Yeah. So, no, I
We haven't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to break for a closed session at 10:25 and we will return after that closed session. All right, we're going to reconvene. It's 11:14. The session is over with and we'll go back to the regular agenda. Just in case anybody came on, do we have anybody that needs to report on advisory board? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda action will be taken on all items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action. And without an extensive hearing, any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Today's items 12A through 12F. Do we have any commissioners that want to pull anything? Hey, anybody in the public? Yes.
Who did you call in 12A?
12A?
Thank you, Chairman.
Oh, sure. Yep, we're going to pull 12A. Anything further? If not, then.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda 12 A through 12F pulling 12A for further discussion.
Second, second with Commissioner Keller, okay? Motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion passes five zero. We'll move to 12A for possible action review and accept claims and financial reports.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. So I guess I just, and I know Mr. Foley had to leave for a meeting. But in going through this budget, you come across some of these claims, like, for example, I'm not sure if it's page 100 or 134. It says page 100 and then it's below to the right is 134, but you see something like accounts for mining claim map fund and shows were in the riz on that. What? What is? I I'm just trying to understand that part of the budget and or the I guess I just need some assistance understanding that. 100, the small 100 or 134? Oh, keep one down.
Yep.
Nope, the other way.
Yep. Big number one, not too fast.
Pretty close now.
Yeah.
And I just picked this one out as an example, but
Okay.
Right there. So accounts for mining claim map fund. We've got available budget minus $1,520. Year-to-date actual minus 408. I I don't understand this, so I need I I need some assistance so I can explain it. And I'm not sure. And I'm not sure.
I think this is just, um, the way I read it. We had budgeted two thousand dollars for map fees. We, we spent four hundred and eighty, so we still have one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars left to spend on map fees.
Why is it negative?
No, it's.
Oh, that, that was the, I'm sorry, the budget to receive. We're supposed to receive two thousand, I guess.
All right.
But, but the other budget line items aren't.
I'm confused too. Thank you, Rob.
The other budget items aren't, they're positive. Another, but I'm just saying, I don't, I don't. I don't understand this.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager. So I believe what's going on here is there's, this is, this comes out of a specific fund and that, so there's a revenue side that's not included in that. That fees are charred, collected as a part of that. Um, I, I would have to get some clarification on this. This is a, something out of the reporter's office, but, um, and so I, I don't I, I don't have a specific answer, honestly. If I had to guess, that would be my guess.
We're negative until we get funds received.
If, if you would like, we can, um, I can go get some clarification on this item.
Uh, no, we'll, we can.
I mean, I, I think that.
You know what? Could you just address it maybe at the next, uh, county manager report?
Yeah, we can do that, but I mean, but in order to prove it, you might.
Yeah, you can bring it. Stick five minutes.
Yeah, I'll be right back.
Okay.
I, I, I'm sorry. I just don't, I don't understand this.
And I was looking down here trying. Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Now, now I'm curious too. All right. Because.
I was trying to make sense of.
Then it's like we even.
I didn't even.
Collected mining claims. That's mapping.
Yeah, it's just. That's a mapping fee.
What?
That comes out of the reporter's office.
Yeah.
When, when somebody's got a mining claim, they want to get a map. We shouldn't be talking right now, but.
Yeah, should not be. We'll get, we'll get an answer here. But the thing was that, you know, I looked at it too, was just, there's a lot of minuses in here on a lot of stuff, so.
Yeah, I know. I'm confused too. I can call your county commissioner, see if they can't complete your yard for you. Stagecoach. That's okay. I, I had that at Silver City the other night. We got all these, what do they call it, sand birds or something? Today, they're all no matter. I can't, can I do something? Uh, most private property for one thing. Yes, you do. The hardest move I ever did in my life was when I was still a kid with my parents and just we moved all the land around the rest of the house. A couple of years later, they bought the house at that store. That was the hardest move.
Really?
Yeah, because nine thousand trips. I said alone and everything in the truck. I don't even want to think about it. I got so much to grab to give. Yeah, I guess we could drive the garage. I ain't got one car. Okay, I got past. Yeah, I know which one. That one's the machine sometimes.
I will guarantee you, there's a simple explanation.
Okay, it's just a dash. Go ahead. Okay, we're back, we're back. I didn't really call us out of order. We just kind of took a pause. But, uh, yeah, it's eleven twenty-six and the county manager's back to explain the dash.
And asking line county manager. So it's exactly like I was saying, this is a cost side. There's a fee that we also charge. So that's an expense to the county. So what happens is every new mining claim pays a fee. That fee goes to pay for the mapping. Um, you don't see the positive side because these are the, the financial claims, so. Um, that's what this report is, so.
Okay.
It's just, that's how it's accounted for.
All right.
I hope that answered your question.
Perfect.
Okay. Any public remarks on that comments? Then we'll go on with twelve A. We need a motion to do twelve A.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion to approve twelve A as presented.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson, a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor of twelve A, say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? That motion passes twelve A five zero. Regular agenda down to thirteen. For presentation only utilities department projects update from the utilities engineer. Mister Panda.
Good morning, functionals. For the record, Mr. Panda, utilities engineer. I'll be presenting a quick update on utilities project for the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. So here is a summary of the five projects that are in different phases. The first one is, is in free design of running is Silver Spring general improvement district improvement disposal project. There are two projects in the design right now. Uh, the first one is Highway fifty. Dayton Valley Roads, your replacement project phase two. Uh, the second one is Smoky Hills Waterman Replacement. Uh, there are two projects under construction. As you know, the one rolling your plant edge function. The second one is, uh, moving right now to the construction is Silver Spring GID Arizona System Improvements. So next slides, as usual, I'll be giving some additional details for this project. So the first one is, uh, Silver Spring GID F one disposal. Um, we got some alpha funding for this affluent management system improvement. We, a board approved a task order with Dowell for about ninety-three thousand dollar to complete a preliminary engineering report. Uh, we, we received a draft PR. Um, but staff wanted to expand that scope, bring some additional components of the current management or a current kind of rehab system to include into that scope. And we would like to return Artkins, a bigger firm that has more experience in such kind of scope of work. And right now we are working with Artkins to include some additional scope to the PR and complete the PR into the final stage. So right as of today, we are working with Artkins, so hopefully quickly we'll bring a contract with Artkins that will include the completion of the PR, which was given to Dowell. Plus some additional scope of work related to the affluent system improvement. Next slide, please. This is Highway fifty, Dayton Valley Roads, your replacement base two. Uh, this project is under design right now. Uh, board approved a contract for, uh, Loomis Engineering for three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. So we kicked off the project in January and, uh, we are expecting a fifty percent design for that phase two pipeline. Uh, next month by May seventeenth. We are hoping to advertise and open the bid by September, bringing a construction contract for board's approval in October. We're kind of learning to start digging the ground in early part of twenty twenty-five. Likely in the spring of twenty twenty-five. Next one, please. Um, this is a water project. It's in Smoky Hills Waterman Replacement. Remember, we had a couple of line breaks in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. So we got, um, a funding for this, uh, for financial year twenty twenty-five for two point three million dollar. Um, right now, this was designed by Manhard initially without any funding from the county. But we retain Manhard Consulting to complete the spec or the bid package and assist us with the, with the advertisement and the, and the physical, the bidding support services. So we have a contract with them right now. Um, so as of date, we advertised the bid yesterday. We're trying to open the bid on May seventeenth. Um, we bring the construction contracts for board's approval or consideration by June sixth. And tentatively, we are planning for construction of this line in front of a school when the school goes to summer break sometime in mid-July and complete the project by October of twenty twenty-four. Uh, just for planning purpose, we are not using Manhard for construction management. So we are going to bring another contract with Loomis, who is going to be providing the construction management for this pipeline construction. So Manhard is going to be still engineer on the project, doing the engineering services during construction. But the construction administration will be given, will be done by Loomis.
Chairman Hockaday?
Yes.
So did I just hear we're delaying construction until July because of school, but then we're going into October. Is that Robin Peter to pay Paul?
We have a section that is running in front of the review elementary school.
That'll be done before the October phase and then when they're working in September and October will be passed to school.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This is a five to six weeks construct some. So within a couple of weeks, we'll be clear in front of the school. So the remaining part can go to August and September. Or at least the school portion will be done during summer.
Okay, thank you.
Next one, please. This is rolling a plant construction phase for expansion project. Um, some of the financial numbers I'd like to present to the board as of date. Construction contract, uh, was nineteen point nine nine million dollar. So far, we have paid up to ten point six million dollar for the contractor. This contract has a one point eight million dollar of contingency fund, which Department Director is authorized to approve. Um, as of last quarter, we have spent only seventy-eight thousand dollars out of that. So for this reporting, I started reporting some of the details of this Watson directive that we call which basically tap into this one point eight million dollar contingency fund. Uh, I gave all the details as you can see in the next slide. So far, we have processed about five Watson directives. You can see the details of those accounts and you can see there are two credits given to the account and there are three debit accounts to the credit. And, uh, if you can see the number two and number three, these are the unknowns that we found from digging this ground. Those are underground activities which was wrongly recorded in our record drawings. So these are kind of unknowns that we expect a change order in the project. Um, we also added a few out of scope items, which is typical in the project. As we move with the project, we find some of the benefits to the project. So we sometimes keep or are just little bit minor scope in the project. So those are the details giving seventy-eight thousand dollars spent out of one point eight million out of debt. Um, in addition to that, also I would like to mention here that our engineering contract with Dowell was based on a twenty eighteen months of construction period. As of date, um, the construction was changed to twenty-four months. And by that time, we already approved the Dowell contract for construction management. So there is six months kind of lagging in the contract with the Dowell that is coming as a change order possibly. On top of that, right now, because of some electrical supply delay, contractor is requesting a three months time extension. This is related to, again, the chips and the panels, they're kind of in short supply. And, uh, so at this point, we are working with the contractor to find out any other opportunity that we can re-adjust the sum of activities. So the ultimate impact may be less than three months, but that basically will hold on to the end of the project. And finally, we'll bring to the board if we ever need to extend the contract. At the same time, also, we are also negotiating or discussing with the contractor how to minimize the cost impact to the project if any, because of this. So, uh, additional progress, the project construction is very satisfactory. Things are moving pretty quick. Um, as I said, only, only hiccup we can see at this point is the supply delay of the major control aspects of the project. Next one, please. Uh, this is, uh, Silver Springs GID Arizona System Improvement Project. Oh. This is a grant money we got from N W C I I, which is Nevada Water Conservation and Infrastructure Initiative Fund. Um, board approved a contract with Parkinson's, who is the supplier of this equipment. Um, back in March for a six hundred nine thousand, one thousand dollar. Um, so far, staff is reviewing the, all the submissions of the project. We didn't hire any engineer to do that. We are doing that in-house. And also we'll be managing the project in-house for the construction. Um, there is some of the items, there are long lead items, which we are expecting by summer they will be delivered. And we are planning to do the construction in fall of twenty twenty-four. And this is a uh, manufacturer-driven construction. We didn't advertise any kind of public bids for this project. At that point, that's all I thought. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Uh, Chairman Hockaday, if I may.
Yeah.
I may, Chairman Hockaday. Um, Mr. Panda, um, on the description on that last one, when I was reading through this, um, I and I, we may have talked about this one previously. Um. But um, under that description, bio lack treatment system has been experiencing mechanical component failures due to aging. I get that. Things get old. Um, the one that concerns me a little bit is lack of maintenances. Um, is there something we're putting in place to address the lack of maintenance on stuff or? Am I misunderstanding that statement in there?
No, you're not misunderstanding. So this is the background what I learned when I came to this. Project, we brought manufacturers right to the side. They said every. Two to three years, these components, these are all plastic P V C components needs to be taken out. Clean, just like a regular cleaning operation. Any kind of air leak or something that has to be repaired. So those are the maintenance as recommended by the manufacturer. Since the downturn, I believe what I learned that we are not doing any kind of maintenance for those components. That's why those small leaks eventually led to a bigger leak. Then it broke the entire section. So out of the nine. Series of chains that we have that basically supply the air to the system. Right now, I think in last one year, we have two breads. It went to three, it went to four. Somehow we are surviving right now. To maintain the process performance. So what we came to know from the manufacturer, this system needs to be maintained. So what you're planning to do in the future? We are buying a boat kind of things is called bio barge. Because it's a pond, nobody can access those components. So after talking to the manufacturer, we are buying a boat kind of thing. So operators can go to the middle of the pond. Using the bio barge, it has mechanism to pull those components. And do the basically manufacturer recommended maintenance. So hopefully next time. We'll extend the life of these assets and will not end up with a similar situation.
That's it. Thank you, sir. And but the question is, at that point, when we saw what the maintenance is required, we just kind of didn't do anything about it. I mean, obviously, we went back and looked at it and said, oh gee, we should have been doing this, but we didn't have the equipment to do it. So. I understand we're now fixing that problem, but it seems like we would have seen that we needed. Equipment at the beginning of this process because of what the maintenance is. Maintenance requirement. Oh, okay.
Also, we have a little bit more manpower we can assign to the maintenance of that system.
Yeah.
Likewise, I want to add something here also. We brought Atkins. Uh. Look at different components that are related to the affluent management such as the pumping. The filter system is not working. The fluid infection, it has been kind of changed from the standard practice. With my background as a wastewater engineer or process engineer. So I I saw there are those are the improvements we need to do. I told to department head that this is at minimum we should do. Otherwise, it's going to fall apart or we are not doing the right thing. For example, the thurians supposed to be those at different location that what you're doing right now. It is doing the job, but it's corroding the other components in the system. So that's why we decided that it's for the best interest. Let's expand the scope and bring in the stock to the current level.
Commissioner Keller. Does a manufacturer send you out stuff that says that this this is happening down their line? Uh. You know, like. Like you didn't know that you were supposed to make do maintenance on that? Is that happening on their products everywhere else or? Do they communicate with you at all?
I think there is no communication in the last few years. What we used to do, what I came to know, we used to buy components for one chain. Staff is to replace here and there one thing, but there is a systematic. Preventive maintenance supposed to be done. Like I said, the bigger rolling a plant. Those defusers, which we had a break last month, I think. That was also partly responsible for not doing a regular cleaning operation of that system. Because there's a defusers, they basically allow the air to go. Periodically, all those solids particle that go there, it has to be clean and we didn't do for years.
Commissioner Jacobson.
So. Um, this looks like we purchased, whether it was through bio lack or the whoever in implement or put it in. Do they? When we purchase something like this, we should get a preventative maintenance plan from them, right? And then a schedule that we can implement. Is that, does that happen with these companies or?
That's a good question. As part of the scope, I asked them to provide the O N M for the whole system. So that we can document it. We can train the staff internally how to do it when the manufacturer is here. We develop a maintenance plan at least yearly or whatever the sequence is. We send the staff continue to maintain these systems. So extending the asset of the life, I think is a good way to save the capital money.
Right.
Right on.
That's what we are trying to do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You see, uh, Mr. Burketa, we've kind of moved up. Did you want to say anything further?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, it sounds good. Thank you. All right. Thank you for the presentation. Fourteen human services for possible action, except the notices sub award from the state of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Aging and Disability Services in the amount of fifty five thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Provide handyman services to individuals deemed eligible per the A D S D service specifications. The comments from commission. Public comment. Shaila. Oh, Shayla, okay. You see up there.
I don't really have anything to add to this agenda item. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, fabulous. Um, I apologize. I'm at a conference stepping out so that way I could be here for these items. Um, Shayla Holmes for the record. I don't have anything to add to this item unless you guys have specific questions for me. Um, it's a program we currently run and these are just a supplemental funds for us to be able to expand.
Any questions?
I do. Who provides the service? Who does it work?
We have several contracts with local licensed handymen and they're the ones that go out and do the work.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Any public? Comment? No.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we accept the notice of sub award from the state of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Aging and Disability Services in the amount of fifty five thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. To provide handyman services to individuals deemed eligible per the A D S D service specs.
Okay. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose. It passes five zero. Fourteen B for possible action approved. F Y twenty four contract for services then to the contractor between. Lion County and Healthy Communities Coalition, not to exceed fourteen thousand two hundred and forty nine dollars for services funded through the F Y twenty four. Lion County Resilient Families. Grant from the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services. Okay. Anything on that?
Nope, nothing to add to that unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions? No, any public comment? I'll look for a motion on that. Fourteen B. Anybody want to jump in with a motion?
Move that we approve the F Y twenty four contract for services of independent contractor between Lion County and Healthy. Communities Coalition not to exceed fourteen thousand two hundred and forty nine dollars for services funded through the F Y twenty four. Lion County County Resilient Families L C R F Grant from Nevada Department of Health and Human Services.
Have a second? I'll second that. A motion by Commissioner Hendrickson, a second by Commissioner Hockaday. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion passes five zero fourteen C. For possible action, approve interlocal contract with the Nevada Division Public and Behavioral South Behavioral Health, Public Health Infrastructure and Improvement. Accept allocated funding in the amount of two hundred and seventy one thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy four cents to execute a public health awareness campaign. Go ahead. Ms. Holmes, any any comments on that?
No, not really. So Shayla Holmes, for the record, I just want to let you guys know S B one eighteen was legislation passed last session. Which identified specific allocations of funds to go to counties for public health infrastructure improvement. Um, it has to be utilized for specific activities and identified through data. And we ended up having conversations with our public health officer, Dr. Titus. And we also had conversations with the Quad County uh team working on the health districting conversation. And we also had conversation with our Lion County Public and Behavioral Health Task Force. And it was uh very well identified that communication and educating our county constituents and on public health issues is. Something that we've been lacking for a long time and it continues to come up as an issue. And so being able to dedicate money. Towards educating individuals in the county about public health. And resources that are available and it can be used on a wide variety of things as identified from our different data sets. Including things such as uh highway safety, all the way down to vaccinations or mosquito abatement. And all of these things have uh been priorities for us over the last several years. So we thought it made a ton of sense to be able to put these monies towards an official campaign.
Okay, thank you. Um. Any commissioner comments or questions?
I'll just, Chairman Hockaday. Um, two hundred and seventy one thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy four cents is a lot. Of money. That's was my first thought.
That was my first thought. Thanks, Commissioner.
I'm just ready to make a motion if.
Okay.
That's done.
Um. Quarter quarter million dollars. Okay, um, Commissioner, any public comment? Motion, Commissioner Keller.
Move to approve an interlocal contract with the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health. Public Health Infrastructure and Improvement and accept allocated funding in the amount of. Two hundred and seventy one thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy four cents to execute a public health awareness campaign.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Oh, no, you didn't ask for names.
You what?
You did not ask for names.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a name?
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay. I am sorry. I didn't hear your.
But you didn't ask.
Yeah, I know. I thought I heard five. So. So. I'll say that again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Okay, now I heard the nay. So I thought I heard five eyes. So motion still passes four one. Sorry, I missed your comment. All right, we move on to fifteen. For possible action, going up to one member through the Wildlife Advisory Board with the term ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. We have one Daniel Tracy. Any commissioner comments?
Um, just a short comment, uh, being on this board for several years, um. Uh, I just want to thank um Daniel Tracy for stepping up um and uh. Protecting the rights of a lot of. Multi-generational families um in uh pursuit of enjoying the great outdoors. So I want to thank Daniel for stepping up.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? If not, we'll look for a motion on this.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve Daniel Tracy. Uh, to be a member of the Wildlife Advisory Board with the term ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five.
Same here.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I think I heard five. Motion passes five zero. County manager for possible action. Review and approve a comment letter to the Bureau of Land Management regarding the solar programmatic environmental impact statement. And everybody has a big package on that. Go ahead, sir.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. So I apologize. This was laid back up. Uh, it took a little bit longer for us to get this together. I was trapped in one day last week. Um. And so. Didn't make it onto the agenda. Except for it's late backup. So any of the letters here and um we've got a number of supporting documents as well. Um, I'd like to hear any um comments on the board. On the letter. If there's any required changes.
Yes, Commissioner Harrison.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Sherrod. No, I just think it's a good letter. I I really do. I think it's well written. It hits all the points that that we addressed and uh. Professionally done, so good job.
And I really, I.
And thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, I really need to throw the credit to Jeremy Drew with R C I who drafted uh the letters. It was online. Yeah, he had to step off for another meeting.
Um, and Chairman Hockaday, I was here for a lot of the presentation. I missed the very end of this as I had to leave, but I would agree this letter is very well written.
Thank you. Agreement with me also. Any public? Comments? Yes, step up. Oh, just eight thumbs up. From Leslie Sane. Gotcha. Okay, we've got uh. A motion then for sixteen A.
A move that we approve the comment letter to the Bureau of Land Management regarding the solar programmatic environmental impact statement.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hendrickson, a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Sorry. Aye, okay. I think I got five eyes on that one.
Okay, all right.
Good on that one. Sixteen A passes five zero. Seventeen A for possible action designate the deputy district attorney, one or two as position four. Which there is a critical labor shortage. I think we read through that and we'll have uh. Mr. Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. Happy to answer any questions on this. As you know, we've had a challenging time recruiting deputy district attorneys. Um, and so uh this is for the critical labor shortage for that, not. For that decision.
Anything further from commissioners? Any public comment? Then we will move on to a motion for seventeen A approval on that.
Mister Chair, I moved that we designate the deputy district attorney, one or two as positions for which there is a critical labor shortage.
Okay. Have a second.
Second.
That's right here, right? That's Commissioner Jacobson. So motion by Commissioner Henderson, the second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That I heard five that time, five zero passes. Agenda request. Let's start with Commissioner Jacobson.
I have none at this time, Chairman Hockaday. Thank you.
Commissioner Keller.
None at this time.
Commissioner Henderson.
That this time.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, I I forwarded some information to Andrew earlier this week. I've had some complaints in stage coach about. Um, rodeos going on out there with no sanitation and things like that. So I'd like to bring an item forward to see if. Staff can bring forward some recommendations on possible ways to address that.
I have no agenda requests. Commissioner comments here. We'll move down from Commissioner Hendricks first.
Nothing right now.
Commissioner Henderson.
I have no comments.
Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, earlier I didn't uh thank uh D A Ryan uh. Aaron and. Mr. Haskins uh. For putting on that uh open meeting law class and. I appreciate it. So I want to give him credit.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, did mine earlier. Thank you.
And. Same thing. Thank you. There's a lot of work on that uh. That meeting for open meeting law and other things. I appreciate all the effort you've made on Saturday. Last public participation, no action be taken on any item and license properly agendized and it's anticipated for public participation at this time. And citizens wishing to speak during public participation, I ask to state your name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. Do I have any further public participation for today? Seeing none. We're done with the closed session. I'm going to adjourn at eleven fifty seven.